All of the regular session for the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors meeting to order for the 22nd, 2018. Welcome and thank you for joining us this evening. We always begin our meetings with a flag sweep, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will go ahead and begin with our agenda for the evening. The first thing that we will be receiving this evening is our recognition that Jacquette Bros would be presenting for the Century High School Wellness Center.
So I would like to welcome the Century High School Wellness Center representatives, Assistant Principal Donna Zerbenyatt and Coordinator Laura Wilson, along with four students who access the center. The focus at Century High School is to help students gain the skills and knowledge needed to graduate and be prepared for their next steps. However, students who are impacted by traumatic events that occur in their lives often struggle with attendance and engagement, which reduces the likelihood that they will be on track to graduate. These students and staff members will share their philosophy for bringing Wellness Center to Century, the impact it has made, and the personal stories of the students who have used the Wellness Center. Please join me in welcoming this group of Century High School students and staff.
So this is Laura Wilson, Chief of our Wellness Center Coordinator, who's going to share a little bit about the philosophy of what we're doing with the students who serve in what we call our brain lab.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us here. At Century High School, our goal is to help our students gain the skills and knowledge they need to graduate and be prepared for their next steps. However, many of our students at Century have experienced traumatic events in their lives, such as divorce, homelessness, substance abuse, sexual abuse, or parental incarceration. Studies show that an estimated 35 to 40% of students in public school have three or more adverse childhood experiences. These experiences impact the way that our students learn. We know that stressed brains do not learn effectively. During the fall of 2017, Century High School opened its Wellness Center. Sorry. The purpose of the Wellness Center is 100% preventative. So it's a place where students come that struggle to attend throughout the day, to remain connected, and then struggle with stress and anxiety. This calming room offers our students' brains the repeated opportunity to calm through a multisensory environment, including mindfulness activities, planned calm motor activities, and quiet stimulation. Once students experience this regulating class, their brains become more open and prone to learning new ways of managing that same stress back at the regular environment. During the time in the Wellness Center, students have access to sensory tools, such as therapy, fidgets, calming tools, brain games, and motor activities like balance boards and exercise balls. Next year, we would like to provide these same tools in every classroom throughout Century to provide all students the ability to practice those skills.
I'd like to just share a little bit of some of our data from this year. So you guys have a picture of in our first year what we have done with our Wellness Center. To date, we opened the Wellness Room in late October. It took us a little bit to get it up and running, but we've had thousands of visits to the Wellness Center, serving 5% of our student population at this time. This year was a pilot year, so we really wanted to get it right. Next year, we hope to grow the number of students that we're serving on a regular basis and then, like Laura said, branch that out into classrooms. Of those students served, we took some data about where their attendance was when they first started coming to the Wellness Center versus where they are currently. And then we see an average of 11% gains in the students and their attendance, which is pretty huge. 30% of our students who are coming are ninth graders, and that was our target focus group. And we're working with our freshman team next year to really implement some of the wellness out into classrooms. We've noticed a reduction in our health center visits. Prior to having the Wellness Center, we have a lot of students who suffer anxiety, depression, who were using the Wellness, sorry, the Health Office as a space to go and try to talk through, and that really wasn't an appropriate space for them. And she has noticed a reduction in panic attacks and his visits to that Health Office, because now our students are being served in our brain lab. We look at some of our discipline data, and it's hard to say that there's a direct correlation between the opening of the Wellness Room directly toward attendance data. But if we look, we see, and I did this data based on a stop date last year at the same time of year. So if we look from September until current May 22nd, we had a reduction of 120 referrals for skipping. We've been down 30 referrals this year for defiance. We're down 50 referrals for disrespect. We're down five referrals for disruptive behavior. We're down 10 referrals for physical altercations. And I think that's not only attributed to having a Wellness Center, but also some of the work that we've been doing this year with our staff around trauma and form care, building relationships with students, and responding with collaborative problem-solving skills as well. So that's really cool for us to see. Not only the numbers, but what I wanted you to hear more are some of the stories of our students. So we have two instead of four, and I told them there'd be about 30 people here this week. I wanted them to share some of their stories about their experience in the Wellness Center.
Hello, my name is Colin Damar. I am a junior at Century High School, going to be a senior in less than three weeks. So my experience with the Wellness Center has been really good. I have autism and Tourette's Syndrome, and it has really helped me in a lot of ways. Before I went to the Wellness Center, I lived out in Texas in Amarillo, and they didn't have one there. So I took three different types of medicines to help try and lessen my autism and Tourette's Syndrome, but it actually made my behavior a lot worse. I would go to counseling. That helped me, and I feel like I needed more. So I decided to go to the Wellness Center after I transferred here from Forest Grove High School in October. It has really helped me a lot with the fidgets and like, you know, pointing my hand and orbes or sand, you know, using the balance boards, rock climbing wall, you know, coloring, all that stuff. And so I feel like we need more Wellness Centers, not just at Century, but at all other schools in this district to help students with disabilities such as mine or if they have, or if they have like bad behaviors, stuff like that, like, you know, help them find a way to calm down along with their, you know, like, therapy and all, therapy and counseling. My brother, he almost got, he almost, my dad almost pulled him out for that reason. And so I feel like we need more, I feel like we need more Wellness Rooms, not just at Century, but at all other schools in this district too.
Hi, my name is Giselle, I'm at Hillsborough, and I'm a sophomore at Century right now. And my journey with the Wellness Center, it's really been really good because last year we didn't have any, we didn't have one. So I was, like, I suffer from, I have depression and anxiety. So every day, like, a struggle just for me to get out of bed. So when I used to go to my classes, I would always have a panic attack, so I would just want to skip, and I didn't feel like I could go through my classes. So, but now, I went to counseling, I used to go to therapy this year, but my mom kind of pulled me out because I was missing too much days of school. I kept going to the counseling center, and then one of my counselors suggested the Wellness Center. And I was like, I don't really know what it was. And then she took me there, and she's like, basically, it helps you with like a relaxing, like a cool relaxing wind down from school, from all the stress you have. So I was like, okay, so she signed me up. And my first visit was, it was good. It wasn't like, because in that time, I was taking like all my tests, and like, I just didn't feel like I could do any more. So I went in there, and I was, and it was good. I kept relaxing, and I learned techniques that I can use during school and out of school. Like, I learned breathing techniques, so I wouldn't have like panic attacks. I know how to calm down in class. And I use like meditation, like before I go to bed, I just like listen to like nice relaxing music, or I do like yoga, or like fidget toys. So during class, I'm not that much on high alert, but I'm more paying attention. I don't want to skip class. But yeah, because last year was, it was really tough, because there wasn't no Wellness Center. So the counselors were always booked, so you couldn't really go to one counselor anytime you wanted to, you had to like make an appointment. So then they could take you at class, but if you missed something, then you missed something. But like, last year was really stressful. Like, in that time in my life, it wasn't a bright future. I just felt like, I just felt like I was going to do anything. But like this year, I was like trying to be like, okay, I have this, you can do this. And the first day of school wasn't that bad, but as school kept going, I was like, I had sports, I had friends, I had my family, and I was like, it was fine, life was good. But I still felt like a piece of me was, it was hard to go through school. It was hard to deal with all this stress, it was hard to deal with friends, it was hard just to do anything. And then I came to the Wellness Room, and I learned certain techniques that you don't really learn in life, like no one tells you these. But when you go learn these things that you can use later in your life, so when you grow, you know, oh, I know how to do this, I can do this. But I feel like we should have Wellness Centers throughout all schools, not just Century. Like, if there's kids from somewhere else suffering something else, you shouldn't just ignore that. They need Wellness Centers, so they need to, they need to know these techniques, because they need to do things. Because they're going through something really tough that maybe not a lot of people know, because everyone wears masks, everyone has a face, everyone wears masks, and they all hide behind that, I hide behind a mask every day. You know, we try to be nice, we try to smile, so no one sees the weird cracks. But a Wellness Center is where you can just let everything happen. You don't need to wear, you don't need to do anything. You just need to know the techniques you need, so you can go through your day, you can have one relaxing time where you can just be you. You don't have to impress no one, you can just be yourself. Without the Wellness Center, I feel like I would just skip class, I would even try to go to class. But with the Wellness Center, people can go to class more, they can have more education, they know they can do these things, they know they can fight what they're having right now, what they're going through. And they have someone listening to them, someone telling them it's going to be fine, because counselors aren't always going to be there for them. They always have more students, not going to be there. But with someone with like the Wellness Center, you know, like, okay, I'm stressed right now, but like, okay, I can go to the Wellness Center, and I can try to pull everything down, plan everything, and then know you'll be fine. So I just feel like we should have more Wellness Centers across like all the schools, not just Century, but like every like school, because kids right now are going through like a tough time. Because right now, this generation of kids are going through like everything they need. Like, right now, like, they're having problems at home, or like there's problems with friendship, or just school in general. I feel like a Wellness Center is like a good relaxing, it's just a good wind down from school. It's like, you don't need to do anything, you just need to like focus on yourself.
I just want to thank them for sharing that. It's really hard to, to share a personal experience. Any questions for anybody? Thank you for letting us share our experience.
Thank you guys so very much for making the time to leave us this evening and share your personal experience. I know that has to be difficult, especially in a very cold room. So we all appreciate you very much for doing this. Well, moving on now to a recognition of retired KUIK owner, Alan, who has been in the staff.
All right, thank you. It's a pleasure tonight to be able to recognize Don. Don has, you probably know the radio station there by the airport. Don has been the General Manager and the owner of that place for years and years and years. As he retires, he's wrapped it up 50 years in the radio business. He purchased KUIK in 1978, and in the eighties, he started broadcasting high school sports at that time. And as a parent who was on the way to those games or running late, it was just, it was so nice to be able to tune in and hear exactly what was going on. And then when he saw your kid, he could pretend you were there. But we just have really appreciated, Don has been such an asset to the community. He runs a number of local programs, and the thing about KUIK, it's one of the stations that provides the local stories. You get to know the local personalities, there's a connection to our community that is just unparalleled in the Hillsborough area. You tune in, you hear neighbors talking about local issues. KUIK is one of those stations that they've earned the trust of the community through their authentic work and just their, they've just spent time learning that by talking about local interest areas and problem-solving issues. I remember the first time that I was invited by Don to be on the radio show, the scariest day of my life. It is one thing to address a crowd, we can see the response, but to be, if you've never been in there, there's four microphones, Don takes one of them, and he's just so natural and cool and calm, and just talks like he's talking to his buddy next door. But when it's your turn to talk, and you're just talking to a microphone without any feedback, it is remarkably hard. So he bailed me out a number of times as I was stammering on about something, like I wish he would do right now. But I just wanted to thank Don for his years of service to the community, his partnership with our school district, the just countless number of students that he had broadcast about and for. And we just appreciate all of your efforts. And we have a small token of our appreciation. We've got a gear from each of our high schools that they wanted to give you. And we invite you to come up and say a few words and what this involvement with KUIK has meant to you. So come on.
I never said a few words.
I know, I'm still nervous.
We started our high school sports on Friday night. I believe it was, it was November. And the first game, I don't recall who played, but that was the first game. And it took us five years of, when we came here in 1978, it took five years to get on the air and do a game, because we were called a daytime station, and we had to shut off at sunset. And it took dozens and dozens of trips in my rubber boots, out of my car, and I looked at a piece of property, kind of measure it, call Seattle to Ben Dawson, the engineer, and I says, I'm looking at such and such. Nope, not, won't work. And we did that for three years, and we finally found a piece of property in the post office. And an attorney in Hillsborough said, have you got that tower up yet? I says, no, it'll be towers, but no. He says, have you talked to the sisters? I says, no, I'm just forgetting about the sisters. He says, they will take care of you. Go see the sisters. So I went over to then Sister St. Mary, was it, no, it's, say it, what's the high school?
Catholic.
Catholic, thank you very much. And I talked to them, and then I went to the farmer that ran the property. And so we began our plans, and we put in four towers. And on Tuesday, we got a telegram, that's the way that we communicated in those days. And they said we could go on the air anytime we wanted to, so we went on air immediately. And that Friday night, we started, and I'll, I'll never remember the game we played, but we played that Friday night, and that was November in 1983. And we've had carried games. And about two or three years ago, we tried to total up how many ballgames we've done. We carry, you know, football, boys and girls basketball. We carry, we carry the basketball, I said that. And we also carry baseball now. We just started that about five years ago. And Matt Ricker, our play-by-play guy, and Scott Hermel, who does the color, which means he adds the funny stuff and the crummy stuff. And we did this about four years ago, and we came up with about 1,650 ballgames we carried up to five years ago. We added to those last five years, and this year, and the basketball, we carried nearly 40 games in those two weeks. This is just two months ago, three months ago, whatever, March. And we've done a lot of ballgames, and we've done them in the rain. We've done them with out electricity, we've failed. We've had smart aleck, 13-year-old boys, they're the worst at 13. And they will cut wires, you know, and think it's funny. I used to do it. And so that would take us off the air for 20 or 30 minutes or 10 minutes, and we get it all repaired. But a great night was when KEX got kicked out of the booth up above, because there was only so much room, and I think it was at Jesuit. And it was a big game, and only KEX would come out on big games. But we carried all the games, and they got told to get out in the rain. And our two guys came in and sat in the dry with the coaches. It's been a thrill. We came here in 1978, started in Jackson Bottom Wetlands, and it's not a wonderful place to have a business. It's a lot of bugs and a lot of heat. But we finally got into the Palatial Palace of the Hillsborough Airport. And that's a nice, those are nice seats, aren't they, Mr. Mayor? Pretty darn nice, you get to look out and see everything going on. And we've had, we've had more fun than I think anybody listening to us had. We went through a lot of announcers, guys that had drawn on, and Big Time, Jane Carroll, just our top-notch female voice in the afternoon. But that's all over with now. And I was ordered off the air by my 110-pound wife. And I've been in radio then, or now, about 52 years, and I've been at KUIK for 40 years. And she says, you're just going to die, and then we're never going to go back to Hawaii. I didn't want to die, and I do want to go to Hawaii, but thank you very much.
And that brings us to, I will find on our agenda approval of the agenda. So I would like to receive a motion.
Move to approve the agenda as printed?
Second.
It has been moved by Kim and seconded by Martin, that we approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion?
Thanks, you guys.
If you'd like to approve the agenda as printed, which Kim moved and Martin seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Agenda is approved. Thank you. That brings us to, I'm six audience time. I have some intent-to-speak cards here. Val, do you have any additional cards?
Not yet.
If you intend to speak before the board and haven't yet completed a card there on the back table somewhere, you can fill it out and return it to Val Bockner right here. So before we have audience participation time, the board chair has to read a statement, which is a little bit long and not entertaining, so forgive me for that, that I did not read it. Public participation in board meetings is governed by policy BBDH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete an intent-to-speak card available on the back table and provide it to the board secretary. Comments concerning a published agenda item are limited to its designated place on the agenda unless otherwise authorized by the board. Comments about non-agenda items will be heard during audience time at the beginning of the regular session. Speakers should state their name, and if speaking for an organization, the name of the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with a common purpose. Three minutes will be allowed for an individual speaker. Five minutes will be allowed for a visitor who is speaking on behalf of a group. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Commendations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board's review of legitimate complaints involving individuals include board policy KL, KLD, public complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in an executive session. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the input of community members. So when it is your turn to speak, I try to let you know ahead of time, and there will be a timer at the podium there that you can see. And there is a beep that happens, if I can remember, at 30 seconds to just remind you. I will do my best to remember, but unfortunately, it's not automatic. So please make sure that you stick to that time. And so we'll start our evening hearing from Stephen Kingsbury, and then the second person will be Josh Wren.
Hello, my name is Stephen Kingsbury. I am representing myself, I'm also an advocate for student health. I'm a former teacher, or a parent of a student, and a chemist. My topic today is idle-free schools. Parents that pick up students at the end of school day tend to idle their vehicles while they wait. This creates an invisible, toxic cloud of pollution that's due to most walks through to get to their vehicles. Because of our climate, exhaust is quickly invisible. I'm from Minnesota, where it was difficult to see in the winter when traffic signals changed through the cloud of exhaust. Just because you can't see it doesn't mean it's not there. Since their lungs are still developing, and they breathe at a higher rate than adults, this can expose them to elevated levels of air toxins that can lead to early onset of asthma, bronchitis, lung cancer, and respiratory diseases. 25% of students in New York City have asthma. In a recent visit to a middle school, local middle school, I smelled ozone. Ozone is a byproduct of exhaust. Ground-level ozone can cause respiratory illness and diseases. Ozone can be detected at a level 100 parts per million by the nose, which is also a level which nobody should be breathing in. In a recent survey of Beaver School District schools, 70% of the cars waiting for their students were idling. And I think it's okay. Americans are addicted to drive-throughs. Newsflash, schools are not drive-throughs. Just because a driver's vehicle is parked idling does not mean they're not polluting the air around them. The program of idle-free schools should be run by the students. After all, it's their health and their environment they must inherit. Beaver School District has instituted an idle-free school policy. The city of Hillsborough recommends it, and I quote, city news, "Turn off your car while waiting to pick up your kids at school." Governor Brown of California recognizes the problem, and I quote, "Pollutants coming out of vehicles does permanent lung damage to children living near well-traveled roads and freeways. This is a fact." Now, your schools aren't by freeways, but in other schools, enough people idling is the same effect. Schools are teaching students. Unless there's a change, it will appear that wastefulness and pollution is preferred to their health. If you're concerned about your students' health and the environment, let's make sure that your schools, the drivers at your schools, turn their key on idle-free. Hopefully, someone in your district has decided, has to decide that enough is enough, and start the ball rolling, make your schools idle-free for the sake of your students' future. And start the ball rolling, make your schools idle-free for the sake of your students' future health. Thank you.
There is a question.
We also have a handout for the board.
Thank you so much. We did want to let you know, in case you are not planning to stay for the whole agenda, a lot of public speakers don't, that we are actually having a first reading for an idle-free policy next month on June twenty-sixth. And we'd welcome you to come in and hear that. It does include school buses as well as parents. So thank you so much for your feedback on that.
Great.
Okay, so we'll next hear from Josh Wren and then after that, Lucas Levens.
Well, my name is Josh Wren and I represent the Century Band students. But I also represent Century Band student perspective as someone who's been a direct product of Duma and Mr. Carl's teaching. Recently, the past couple of years, we've had two main directors at Century High School, Mr. Duma and Mr. Carl. And Duma has a lot on his plate already. And having Mr. Carl able to teach the band and also the jazz bands allows Duma extra freedom to go to other schools, such as Emlee Elementary School. And like, that's where I started my band journey. And that's how I started my path to good academics and athletics and a good life. But in elementary school, I was kind of phased by the majority of my teachers being complacent with me, giving me homework, and just letting me be. Duma was different. He actively involved himself in my improvement as a band player. And he gave me a little bit of advice when I was in sixth grade. And his spiel was, "Don't be poopy." That seems kind of funny, but that stuck with me for the rest of my middle school and high school career. And it means that like, even if you really get at something, you can always be better. You can always not be poopy. And he's been involved in a lot of my life in high school and in bands. And I really like thanking Mr. Carl. Recently, there have been some decisions in our administration to replace, to keep Duma full-time at Century and keep Mr. Carl not being able to teach at Century. And I respectfully disagree with that. I believe that the relationship that Duma and Mr. Carl have with each other and with the band is really beneficial to us as band students. And having Mr. Carl not be able to teach at Century makes Duma have to be full-time at Century. And I know that he has been offered a high-paying position to teach at both Century and Emlee. And he has turned that down. But that's because he has too much on his plate. And having Mr. Carl teach at Century and Duma having less on his plate from Century will allow him to go to other schools and influence other kids in that band program like he has influenced me. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wren. I apologize for mispronouncing your name. So we'll next hear from Lucas Levens and then Kirsten Allen. Or Kirsten Allen. However, I know, I know that these comments are regarding the band change, which is totally wonderful. Welcome you. I do want to remind public speakers that the board does ask that you not share comments regarding specific individual staff members. So if you can try to keep your comments a little bit more general and not call out folks by name. That just protects everyone in terms of privacy. Be a positive or negative comment. So try to work with us on that if you can, appreciate that. So Lucas Levens and then Kirsten Allen.
Thank you. My name is Lucas Levens. I'm a junior at Century High School, a drum major in the band. And I speak for myself and for the signees of a petition we've been going around with for the last six days. It was just less than a week ago that all of us heard about the decision that Josh referenced regards to moving different teachers around to different positions. And myself and many others, including everyone who have signed this petition, think that this is a very poor decision. Not that it was made out of malice, but that it's going to have a lot of unintended consequences on both the program at Century, at Brown, and at the Beaver Schools. Mr. Duma, the teachers, the music teachers in our district, but specifically at Century and at Brown, are incredible. And with the recent developments in the last two years where they've been moved to be able to work more closely together, has really had a large impact on our programs. Most specifically, the jazz bands at Century have drastically improved ever since we were able to get a second teacher. Who, I say his name because he is an incredible person, Mr. Carl. He is not only a wonderful teacher who's been teaching for many, many years, but he is an outstanding jazz musician, if you haven't heard. One of the best trumpet players in the region by far. Even today, he still does pay gigs. Just this year, ever since he's come to Century, he's made a really big impact on the jazz band that he's done. And just this year, we were at a competition, I can't remember where I was at, but the first jazz band took like third or fifth, and his jazz band took first. He's incredible. Anyway, with this petition, we've only been, we've only had the six days since we found out. And in that time, we've gathered a thousand and sixty-two signatures from students affected, from parents who are going to be affected, and from other supporters in the area. Now, I would like to note that this wasn't an online petition. This wasn't something I handed out to a bunch of people and said, "Go get as many as you can." Every single petition had an ID, had a person who was running it. And we went through, just today, spent hours going through every single name, making sure that there was not a single double signature. Because we want you to know that this, this is real. These are real people who care about this and don't want this decision to go through. Because what you can't see on a piece of paper where you transfer a teacher is the impact it will have on the students and on the programs that these teachers have built for years and years and years. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wren. That was the executive assistant to the board, and she can scan that and make sure that all the board members have access. Thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker is from Kirsten Allen.
I am not sure I need to speak because these kids have done a really good job of telling you how they feel about this program, but I have a different perspective. Excuse me a second while I calm my nerves. I think the biggest question we all have here tonight is why that successful program that has been created here at Century is being changed? Kind of, it's not broken as far as we can see. Why are you trying to create something that's not broken? So I have four children. From my perspective, I'm here on behalf of the parents of the Century High School band. I have been a band parent for twenty years. In nineteen ninety-eight, my oldest picked up the saxophone. My youngest is about to graduate. And so I've been a band parent for twenty years. I was around when there was only twenty-three kids in this band. And I'm here now when there's well over two hundred kids in this band. And that doesn't happen without a good program and without good support from the parents, but also from a dedicated staff that continues to help these kids learn and grow in a music setting, but in life lessons. That you can learn other places, but really is a great place here in the band to learn that. So I could talk to you about how important the program is. I could tell you about how hard it is to make that program work. I could tell you how the kids are academically superior in this group, that we have a majority of the soliditarians and the valetorians every year at Century. I could tell you what a difference it makes to have a dedicated middle school band teacher who supports the high school band, because there was a time when that didn't happen and the teachers did not work collaboratively. I could tell you, as Lucas did, how great our jazz bands are because we teach them not just in the year that they can be good enough, but we teach them from seventh grade on to be great jazz musicians. And that starts in the middle school program. Over the last twenty years, the program has grown and more have been tweaked to where now we have the best scenario with the most dedicated and qualified teachers you can have in this program. And that's why we filled this room today is because we want you to know that this is what we want and this is how we want it to stay. I'm going to talk a little bit about what happens if you take dedicated teachers out of the sixth-grade band program. Our director of bands, let's talk about my youngest daughter. In sixth grade, when the school district was unable to fund the sixth-grade band program, that was my daughter's year. And there was not just our band director, but a couple of other music teachers that dedicated time to that program to teach the kids during their elementary school and get them started and get that CHOMP program. I was actually one of the teachers, the flute section of the year, that our director of bands started the CHOMP program. I could tell you a lot about the CHOMP program. When it started, you didn't have enough high school teachers to run the program. Now you have a hundred and twenty-five average kids that come for extra time in that program. But back to my daughter, who didn't get a sixth-grade band program. Her senior year, there were ten seniors graduating from band. And in some sections, there was only one senior. And that's a real, that's a real sad thing to have that happen. It was something that happened that continued to, I don't know how to explain it. It had an impact from sixth grade until twelfth grade for that year of students. And I think that our band director has been building the program significantly since then. I want you to raise your hand if you did CHOMP or helped with CHOMP in any way. So if the band director is unable to get into the sixth-grade classes and to encourage attendance to this program, it's going to go away. And the kids in here that all raised their hands won't have opportunities to serve and get outside themselves and be able to help with the CHOMP program. And the kids that are there to benefit from the program won't have that opportunity either. So I guess our point is, we're here to support the band. We know that that support comes from sixth grade until twelfth grade and not just when they reach high school.
Thank you. That's the last public speaker for audience time.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for sharing their concerns. I know that this is an issue they're very passionate about. And when it comes to doing any type of staffing in the spring, it's definitely a challenge for us. And when it comes to staffing some of these specialty classes and elective classes, it's even more of a challenge because of the puzzle it takes to consider all the elements, including these assignments together. Whether that be making sure that we have a full-time assignment for every teacher, making sure that we're trying to meet the needs of all of the schools, maximizing the instructional time and cutting down on the travel time of our teachers. And those are all elements that go into that decision. Know that we don't take those lightly. We are not interested in all in having any type of reduction in music program in the staffing or in the quality of the program. But it is a large puzzle and we recognize that. I want to take an opportunity to, if there has been this, if there's been miscommunication on this or not enough communication on this, I might like to apologize for that. I know that has led to feelings of frustration. And it was never our intent to not be transparent in this issue whatsoever. And we'll continue to problem-solve this issue, not only for the needs of Century, but also for the needs of all of the schools that we represent in the district and their music needs as well. And just know that we remain committed to the music programs and to the arts. And we will continue to do our best and deliver the best program possible for all of the students here in our district. So again, I appreciate you sharing your concerns and your passion around this issue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming and supporting either by speaking or just being here physically. We are listening and we see you, so we do appreciate you taking the time to be here. If you don't want to stay for the rest of the board meeting, typically people kind of thin out at this point. You're welcome to do that. We also would love to have you stay for the rest of the business of our meeting if you think that's entertaining. And we'll try to make it fun. So feel free to leave or stay and we'll just move right along with our agenda. Okay, so we are at reports and discussion. Okay, so now we will move on to item seven, reports and discussion. We are at seven A with Boa, she's a youth development program for Boa's team. Yes. She's trapped. She's trapped.
Yes.
Scaredy cat.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Are Chicas here? Yes. I'm excited tonight to introduce you to a program that has been successfully engaging and empowering Latina youth to become leaders in their schools and community. Letitia Aguilar, Director of Adante Chicas, will share some of the incredible positive outcomes that we have seen among Latina youth and our families in our community. Please welcome Letitia Aguilar.
Actually, I will not be speaking as we have two of our wonderful participants who actually would like to speak on behalf of Chicas. So I thought I was getting better than you having to listen to me. Karina, Boa, introduce them.
Okay. Hi, I'm Karina. I'm the facilitator at the Glaco High School for the Chicas program. And these are two of our Chicas participants. They're both freshmen and they are wonderful, so they're going to talk to you a little bit about the program.
Hi, I'm Roxi Neri Wong. I'm a freshman at Glaco High School. I've been part of Chicas program since the summer of third grade.
Hello, my name is Atisha Ferminas-Cotteris. And I've been a part of the Chicas program since seventh grade. So Chicas' vision is to contribute to the holistic education and empowerment of young Latina standard families with the purpose of strengthening communities by developing local leadership. Chicas has formed many components, such as after-school sessions, college readiness, such as scholarships, IDAs, field trips, community service, civic engagement, family engagement, soccer academies, STEM, and summer scholastic camps.
Chicas program is part of six elementary schools and those workshops, along with two middle schools. And currently, two high schools. But next year, Chicas program will be available in Glaco High School.
Chicas serves a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-two students for twenty-five sessions at each school. Minimum program support for students, fifty hours. Field trips and college visits, sixteen in total. Involvement to the university, college, community college, or technical school, one-hundred percent of Chicas participation. Chicas' family engagement program is modeled on best practices based on research from our Oregon community organizations.
Chicas has offered a total of eleven family gatherings and workshops and served a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-two families and four-hundred-and-eight participants. We made a total of a thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-one phone calls to families.
So do you have any questions for us? I'm Kate and Jackie.
So Chica Glaco High School?
Yes, so it will now be offered at that site next year.
Can you add?
Can you add a funding issue or why?
So one of the commitments that we make with the school is for us to be able to have quality services. We need to have a strong relationship with the school. And so there was a lot of challenges throughout the year. And so this year, we decided that it would be best to not continue next year until we are able to work a stronger relationship.
Jackie and Amanda.
Well, I have one more question. Do you have plans to expand to additional little elementary schools?
We actually do. We've been approached by different schools. But for sure, here, one of the schools that we are looking into is Reveal Elementary.
I'm sorry, I have a big group of fans.
Oh, great.
Just roll on around here and say something.
Awesome.
Erica?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could go back to the slide of the program that you have an activity to do. This one, yeah. So one of the things that I know because I have kids that participate in this program is that there's also a lot of conversations that happen that are very helpful. And I think that that's something that should be highlighted in the after-school sessions, especially just social awareness and those types of social issues that you, the facilitators, keep on and have really good dialogue about. And I'm hoping that that continues and that develops again more. So I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, definitely. That as well, definitely in after-school sessions. And I think one of the areas that is crucial is the fact that we have bilingual, Latina, bicultural facilitators running our sessions. So that creates that, a strong connection with our students. And they are able to relate really well and create those... Also open up for those great conversations.
Any other questions? Anything else?
I think the only thing I would like to highlight is that we're in our second year of really looking at developing a stronger foundation with how the young Latinas relate to adults in their school setting. And so we have partnered with Adelante to ensure that there's a co-facilitator, another adult in the school that works with the facilitator. Reason why facilitators generally come once a week, with the Latinas Chicas, is they generally come once a week. So by partnering with the school staff member, generally there's family liaison and really co-teaching the lessons together, after school has built a stronger foundation. There's always someone in the building that the students can rely on and use for support. But it has been powerful this year.
I think one area that we would like to add is that we have our individual development accounts for our students. So this year, we were actually able to enroll two or three savings accounts for our Hillsborough School District students, which means that for every dollar they save, we will match three. So at the end of the savings plan, they will have $12,000 to go to college. And then we also have a partnership with PCC, where our participants that are going to go there have the opportunity to apply for scholarships through Adelante Mujeres Foundation in Chicas. So we also have a student that has received that scholarship who's going to go there. So it really helps us. As you might know, our families don't have formal education, so therefore, they don't make a lot of money. They might work in the field. So their income is definitely not something that's going to help their kids or pay for college. And they also don't have that knowledge that they need. So definitely, $12,000 is a really good amount to start this person to college.
I'd just like to thank you. We know the difference that you're making with our students. And we often talk to districts about each student is one relationship away from being a success story. And really feel like your programming body of that. So thank you for the care that you take for our students and the interest in planning for their futures and helping them be on the right track. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to Ivy Student Input Report with Mike.
So as you know, we have been making the rounds to all of our high schools and having the opportunity to speak to groups of students and really just getting some informal feedback from them on a variety of different topics. And I know that Mark and Erica have been in on those sessions. Kim, thank you, Kim. And I appreciate the attendance there. What I want to do is just, you've got it in your hand up there. I'll just highlight a few of these things. Some of the questions that we ask the students, there were patterns that emerged. Now, realize if we met with 120 students so far, there's going to be a variety of different responses during that time. But there are some patterns that definitely emerged. We asked them, the question that we typically started with was, "What do you wish you knew as you went to high school?" So these are juniors and seniors that we talked to. And so we were looking for advice that we could give our eighth graders or experiences that we could provide our eighth graders to prepare them for the transition to ninth grade. And you can see the responses that they had there. But over and over again, the idea of time management, the importance of time management came up. This whole idea around grades matter, all of a sudden. You could pay attention to that. And one of the ways to increase the success of your grades is by attending on a regular basis. And some students have learned that the hard way, it sounded like. And there were a number of students who spoke to the importance of extracurricular activities and just making sure that you're involved in something besides just the classroom aspect. We have a big potion in our district to make sure that we know our students by name, strength, and need. And so we asked the question, "How many of you have an adult in the school that you could go to for support if you needed that support?" And I didn't keep track of the actual numbers, but I'll say roughly 75% of the students indicated that they did have someone. And the three that came to the top most often were either a coach of some type, they're avid teachers if they were an avid student, or just a favorite teacher who had shown an extra interest in them. We asked them about school safety. And that question kind of backfired on us because we got a lot of comments about things that irritated them about the school process, so whether a door was locked or there were closed lunch... Closed campus at lunchtime, that was a trend. But they also mentioned making sure that we take the practice drills that the students and the staff take those more seriously, as we were talking about in our work session this evening. And so that was definitely a trend. We asked them about career and college pathways, if they would travel to other schools if there were a specialty program at another school, or they would travel there for a portion of their week. And there was definite interest in that. I don't think many students indicated that they would want to do that on a full-time basis, but many students indicated that they would do that for a portion of their day if it meant getting the courses that they were really interested in, that might also lead to some of their career interest areas. Number of classes, we asked, "Which classes do you wish were offered?" And you can see them listed there. There were a lot of classes that came up over and over again. There was definitely a pattern of personal finance as well. That's something that came up over and over again. We asked them about the high school block schedule. Is that a schedule that works for them? Or would they rather have a straight schedule where they saw the same classes every day? And we were exactly 50/50 split on that question. And in terms of just miscellaneous, I think the one thing that I would highlight in the miscellaneous category is a number of students talked about the need to have access to an adult who they could just talk with. And that whether it be coping with issues, which you heard from some of our wellness students, wellness center students tonight, or dealing with stress, or just giving guidance to get through the system. And many students mentioned that they would love that if that were their counselor. But just the lack of time that counselors have to engage with each student, there needs to be more adult assistance. Erica and Mark, is there anything that you would like to add to those patterns that you heard as we went through?
Yeah, there was one thing that I remember hearing was especially having kind of like a peer mentor when they came that would connect with them at the middle school level so that then later on, when they transitioned to the high school level, they already had somebody that they knew in school. And they kind of had like an older, you know, person to look up to. But that being the student who was old and made it so that they could connect better and so that they can establish that relationship in middle school. I thought that that was actually a really great idea. And it also helped the other students develop additional skills.
Yeah, and I would say it in more than one. So it's a very impressive group of students. I feel like us old people are in our futures in pretty good hands. Because they're going to take over, and they're going to be fine. But to your point about the somewhat known by an industry, the need, the thing I asked was, you know, "Are you a self-selecting group anomaly that decided to come talk to the superintendent?" And universally, their answer was no. Like every one of their friends and peer groups, they even say, "Have a person, an adult that they could go to in the school." So I was very, you know, maybe optimistic about the situation.
Yeah. The ones I often do is in regards to the time management, organization part. A lot of the students that wasn't avid said how much that helped them be better at doing those. So advocating for more students to be able to participate.
Right, maybe even not... Maybe avid, the full avid program isn't necessary for everyone. But the idea of learning to learn, which you kind of don't necessarily get in middle school. Maybe it's a tough time to do that. But applying some of the avid style concepts more generally across the curriculum, finding a way to introduce, like, "How do you take notes in the chemistry class?" That just throw a kid in the chemistry class and assume we're going to figure out how to learn chemistry. So that the concepts of learning to learn came up.
Mark, you have a question or comment?
Both. Thank you, Mike. This is awesome. I really appreciate you doing this. One of the things the board's been trying to figure out is how do we engage the students and hear their voice. And this is a good part of that. It's kind of like a copy chat type thing for the students. So that's how I see it. Regarding question three, which was, "What can be done to improve school safety?" On the one hand, maybe it did backfire. But on the other hand, maybe it's insightful as to really how they're not our partner on this just yet. If you look at broader, how do we educate kids? Clearly, it's partnership with each individual student. And they need to see safety and security in the same way, where it's a partnership with every single student to be safe and secure. And, you know, if you look at mass transit, the phrase "See something, say something." You can't get on a bus without being confronted with that logo because the reality is, is a shared responsibility amongst all of us to be engaged on safety and security. So how I take their certain non-answer to question three, is it called an action for us as the adults? We've got to find a way to engage our students and get them on board so that they can be the partner that we need them to be if our schools are going to be safe and secure, because we need them to be. So thank you, Mike.
Kim and Mark?
My question might be more towards Travis. I don't want to scare you. I know they're kind of warm because I know that we've done graduation requirements not very long ago. What would it take to make personal finance not an elective? To make it required? It is the most often question I get from high school students. And I have students who tell me that that was the most impactful class that he took in high school.
Off the top of my head, I might have asked Dale for help on this. So Martha, there's a certain set of required courses to have a diploma in Oregon.
Right.
And then others that are required if you want to get that. Chancellor's are automatic admission into our university system. And personal finance isn't on that list.
Can a district have a different requirement in state of Oregon?
We can require what we want to require. It does set up a requirement that we offer enough sections for that course and enroll students and have a system that builds up to that. Theoretically, yes. An example of that is that we required biology of all students a couple of years ago. Remember that? And we decided we were doing that because we chose to do that.
I'm curious if we're able to meet the needs of students who are forecasting and would like to do personal finance.
Never could.
Yeah, kind of the personal finance content was folded into economics. But I think what we're hearing from students is they want more than just kind of the basics. And I know one of our high schools this year put it on as an elective option. And you can also take it through Hillsborough Online as well. And the high school that added on this year that didn't have it before was able to fill like three sections of it. So I think it is something that we're beginning to hear our kids ask for. Like all courses, we ask for what our kids are asking for. So I think that's a conversation as we move into next year.
For sure, my student felt like personal finance was far more impactful than economics. Like he really felt like, you have a college-age student, they don't know how to write a check. And believe it or not, you still have some places to have to write a check in the whole world that isn't San Antonio. There were things that he felt that were like, "Why aren't these life skills taught in high school? Where was I supposed to learn this if I didn't take that elective?" And so I was like, "Oh, I'm messed up." But I just think there's a lot of kids right to... It's more specific than economics. It really is life stuff.
And I'm happy to dig in, you know, in the high school. Happy to dig in and see what the history is of the course and how it got folded in, what has been eliminated or has been included. So I can do that digging into that too.
Thank you.
Okay, so people have been popping up and off. And I don't know if it's... Erica, you were on there. I was, but you're not now. Okay, so you were in session, and then Martin, you were up there, but now you're not. I think Jackie was up there, now she's not. Or she's playing. Our answer was, she's going to begin to...
I think your instincts are correct, that when we ask the safety question, it's not seen as a partnership. And the students don't quite understand the correlation between locking the gym door, making so you have to go around, and that inconvenience makes you more safe. So figuring out a way to describe the inconveniences in a way that makes people feel more safe is probably what I'm looking for.
Good dear? And then I just wanted to talk about the feedback the students gave in helping transition from middle school to high school. And I remember a while back, they presented that lean crew. Does that help high that kind of helps the freshmen? So maybe something like that and taking it back a year to make greater some thinking about maybe something in high school might work. Kind of do something that we already have to kind of build upon.
I don't know if you remember this year, but when we did it a couple of years ago, there was this brilliant idea of giving the kids maps or posting a map on the wall. And I don't know if we ever did that, but I just thought that was genius. And it would certainly help me a lot when I started. I guess we never did it, and I should go back on the list. That was a good one. Okay, 7C, AdvanSED with... Is that right, AdvanSED? Yep, with Travis.
Thank you. So AdvanSED is an international accreditation organization. They support school institutions in becoming accredited. Our high schools have done accreditation for many years. Two years ago, in preparation for our strategic plan to get feedback on the status of our school system in its entirety and for other reasons too, like we were going out for a bond and wanted to be transparent and positive with our community about how wonderful our schools are. We invited AdvanSED to HSD to become systems accredited, which was the first time that an Oregon school district had done that. And the process was essentially to bring a... We did an internal evaluation of ourselves. Everything from governance and budget and technology to instructional leadership and systems for students. We sent that off to the organization AdvanSED. And then they recruited a team of educators from around the country and from Oregon to come and visit us. And they spent a couple of days with us and interviewed students and visited schools and talked to community partners, many of us. And then the product of that was a report that highlighted promising practices and priorities for improvement. And they gave us the stamp of approval as being systems accredited for a five-year period. So two years into that process, which is on a five-year cycle, they asked us to submit an accreditation progress report. And what you have in your packet is the letter that we got back from the reviewers of that report. So it basically says in bold there, "Accepted," underlined, which is great. We maintain our status as systems accredited. And then they give us feedback on three of our priority improvement priorities. Those aren't stated there, so I just wanted to read essentially what those were. The first priority they gave for us was to establish a process for revising our mission and vision and to hold all institutions accountable to aligning with that mission and vision. So that's our schools. This is compelling, you guys.
Okay, Martha.
Okay. Martha owes me for this. She would have been doing that accreditation by... So the second one was to establish instructional focus, align PLC practice, and have curriculum that supports high-quality instruction. And the third priority was to improve technology. So you can see each of those, number one, number two, and number three is a response to what we submitted and the artifacts that we gave them that said, "Here's our progress two years down the road." And it's all very congratulatory and pretty specific. So I'm happy to answer any questions. This is really just a celebration of us holding ourselves accountable as a system and improving over time.
My recollections are the bond campaigns that we said that we were the only district in Oregon to receive this accreditation. Is that true?
It is true. There was another district that... There was another district of Black Monroe or something in the Southern Willamette Valley who was pursuing it as well, but I'm not sure what their status is at this time. We were the first. I'd have to confirm that we're the only.
And for a while.
Yes.
Other questions? Just Martin. Very exciting.
Again, a team effort. We had a large team submitting the two-year update and things to a lot of.
Do your whole team tomorrow then.
I'll do it.
Thank you. Okay. Let's let's move right along. Thank you, Travis. Seventy, NSBA conference reports. So Jackie and Mark went to National School Boards Association Conference in April in San Antonio, Texas, and they will now share some of their their highlights and little bits of knowledge with us, starting Jackie and then Mark.
So we went in April seventh through ninth, this in San Antonio. It was an amazing experience. I just, I can't, I just. What? Are you talking to?
No, don't show the videos yet. I'll tell you when I want to show them.
Diana. I didn't know there wasn't. You guys brought it. It's a multimedia presentation. This is my surprise face.
It was a great, great opportunity to hear some very motivational speakers, attend some really great sessions. Some, I'll just highlight a couple of my my tidbits that I brought back from it was I attended a courthouse, a schoolhouse, which is about free speech, students' rights and employee rights and board member rights. And that was really one. I mean, that was one of my favorite ones. The Road to Success, which is for kind of governance for new board members. And one thing I took away from that was student achievement is the umbrella that all district actions should support. And the golden rule for board members is if someone's hired to do it, it's not your job, which I use that at work too. So it's twofold here. The other one that that Mark and I both attended was the maximizing student representation on your board, which I think that we're doing, we're starting on that. I attended a special education fundamentals session and building collaboration with PTAs, which to me ties into helping our paths and our PTAs kind of work more collaboratively together as a group instead of two individual organizations that we can help, I'm hoping we can help bring them together under a common common goal. The one that intrigued me the most was the changing paradigm, a district that added 31 more days of instruction as a pilot program. And I won't go into the details. It's the third year of their pilot and their data is just so powerful. I just can't, I can't tell you how wonderful it is. The two schools participating have gone from performing in the lowest 10% to the top 20% of their elementary schools. And their their district is very similar to ours insofar as school size and numbers. I could go on, it's just absolutely amazing. But the smarter, our smarter, the Hillsborough, smarter funding teams taking a look at this idea to see if it's something we can afford to pilot and what obstacles we have to overcome. The presentation was amazing. I mean, it went into here's, here's where we started, here's kind of how we got there, here's the, I mean, they laid it all out, the obstacles and everything. So it was, it was really amazing. We saw some great music, local music performers, there's jazz ensemble acquired from Lexington, South Carolina and Texas and Missouri. See, who were the speakers? Julian Castro, who is the mayor of, previous mayor of San Antonio and Secretary of Housing and Urban Development under Obama. And I think the best part was seeing Mark in a hairnet when we did the rice, the 12,000 pounds of food for the food bank. Should have brought that picture. I didn't know you were doing a video. I brought pictures. But that was, did you see that? Yeah. All the hair is supposed to fit in the.
He has much that I do.
No, no, you're. Yeah, anyway, it was a great opportunity and yeah, I learned a lot. I came away with a lot of great ideas. So I'm still trying to balance all that, not just inundate everybody with ideas. So that's it.
So yeah, guys, generally, I just wanted to thank the board for giving Jackie and I the opportunity to do it time because it was, as you said, it was amazing. If you get a chance to go to Philadelphia next year where it's going to take place, I would suggest you do it. Philadelphia's a great city to visit. San Antonio was great, but Philly's pretty good. Standing in the place where they sign things is kind of impressive. And be sure to talk, if you do go, be sure to talk to the folks from around the country by lunchtime at breaks. It's one of the most interesting parts was sort of the weird connections you would find like, you know, people from Illinois who were from the high school I would have gone to if my family hadn't moved from one district to another. So just sort of finding out, you know, different ways people do things around the country like in Illinois, for example, the elementary and middle schools are in one district and the high school is in a different district. So the kids actually transitioned from one district to another when they leave middle school to go to high school. Interesting. And if Jackie decides to go, that's good because Jackie's an excellent travel man. I did a bunch of sessions on equity and no surprise, students relate to somebody who looks like them more effectively, especially the after students. And one sort of minor surprise from their study was that all students related to teachers of color more effectively. So that was lightning. One of our biggest challenges is obviously a boys of color. And I've already asked Dale some of this, like looking at our discipline numbers to just, are we, are the rates of discipline, the percentage of students we we have discipline problems with representative of the demographics of our district or are they different? And it turns out they're different. We we have discipline problems more with students of color than we do with white students. So that's an indication that there's work to do there. Finding a way to get more men in teaching, teachers that look like new concept, more boys having a place to go. Some some higher educational institutions are partnering with districts on a call me mister program. So something to look into, I guess. It's probably. So yeah, those are opportunities with Western, PCC, Pacific, whoever it is, sort of look into those opportunities. The grow year round concept that we've been talking about in the past couple of months. A lot of that really resonated with me. And Colorado did something innovative on that front where they redirected some prison funds to their school districts to try to cut off before we get to be a problem. The student reps on the school boards Jackie talked about was very interesting. I'll just say a couple of things because I think we're going to go deeper into that. But that the support structure needs to be multi-layered, that if you assign a student one board member, don't be surprised that students start sharing the opinions of that court member. So let's have a committee to help guide this person, a couple of board members, community members, a parent. So try to give, set them up for as much success as we can. Don't just do it to say we have student representation, let's do it and meet it. And we have to build the program over time, so this might not be an option now. As we, as we grow and reach out to students who might want to participate, the visual that he was using was he had people stringing yarn and then hold the balloon and the different colors of yarn were different support structures and the balloon was the student. And the great metaphor that resonated with me at the end was don't always search for the highly inflated balloons to be your representative. You'll get more out of helping inflate that balloon as they go along. That might not be an option for us at the outset, but it's something to think about. And it's a two-way street. We're going to benefit very much if we have the students on the board because we'll get insights that we might not have gotten. And I don't know if you all noticed, when we add all the students in here, we tend to be our best selves when there are kids in the room. So hopefully that will help us. A lot of the stuff I other did was focusing on the future, you know, what, how are we preparing our kids for the world of work that is coming? I'll try to skip ahead and talk a lot. Stop doing things that don't work. How important pre-K, you know, if we were going to solve economic problems of our country and our community by improving test scores, it probably wouldn't happen by then. So figure out what will actually change the situation for everybody. How important pre-K is. So I know, I know we're K-12, but when we're, when we try to measure that third grade benchmark, if we spent K through three just catching up, it's hard for them to be on track when they get there. So what can we do? We're doing pretty well in that regard, but there's always more we can do to make sure that they're coming ready to go. And now, can you, can you show my robot video? Who's got the control of this thing? Show the robot video? Yeah, just show the, show the robot video first. We tend to think of automation and artificial intelligence and taking over desk jobs. A computer was actually the name of a person who computed things. And now that's just a job a machine does. We tend to think that there are jobs that won't be eliminated by computers because they're manual labor or something. This is a robot that lays bricks. So that it's, there's no job that is not going to be impacted by artificial intelligence and automation. So just realize that, you know, as we prepare the kids for the world of work, it's going to be my interpersonal skills are going to be critical in the new world of work.
That's a terrifying video.
Isn't it? Right. That's why I showed it because it scared the crap out of me. You think there's no way robots are going to do manual labor? Well, they proclaim robots.
Okay.
And if you think about, you can stop if you want. If you think about, yeah, I don't think of technological progress as evil or good. It just is, it was always this. We fought wars with rocks, then with spears, then with arrows and guns, right? So this amazing device is probably the worst technology our kids will ever have. And so transitioning the concepts of the teachers not being the owners of the knowledge, but the facilitators of knowledge. So in that, in that world where knowledge is just, all the sum of human knowledge is on the internet, how do we make sure that kids have access to it in ways that help them become better, ready for the world of work in the future? And now, can you show the second one? And so, and then sometimes you just need to bang on something with a stick. So this is me and Jackie at the drum circle. After sessions one day, so the first day we went and filled up the bags of beans and rice for the food bank. And the second day, the National Association of Music Merchants, which as somebody who's been like, you know, music his whole life in the most part, I'm very familiar with these folks, they sounded drums all over and practiced through exercises. And it was very cathartic to just stand there and bang on something with a stick at the end of the day.
Good work.
So thank you guys very much for letting us go. And if you get a chance to do it, you should.
Thanks, guys. There were no drums when I'm in Denver. Maybe they'll have some in Philadelphia next year. We'll see.
Some for jokes.
All right. So questions for Jackie or Mark before we move on?
Question for Jackie. When we talk about in the cuts, we always talk about what we get cut staff or we could cut days. And so the, I never thought about the opposite and that is a bigger choice as well. Did they specifically contrast adding days versus lowering class size?
They didn't discuss that, no. That wasn't one of the, one of the things they talked about. They took their, they looked at their, their lowest performing schools with the highest freedom of sludge and, you know, went, went about it that way and then finding the funding to do it. And they got really creative. There was one thing about, I'll just say it, it was the bus drivers, right? Because you did bus drivers in the summer then. And instead of just bus drivers, they made them tutors in the school. So they stayed in the school during the day to help the kids, which was kind of twofold. I mean, it was just a creative solution, you know, they had to get really creative with how to do this. And it was, it actually ended up, there were less incidences on the bus because the bus drivers had those relationships that they had built with the kids while they were in the school with them. So they didn't just drop them off and leave, they dropped them off and stayed. So it's just, it was just a very creative way to the way they did it. It was impressive.
And a big part of it was that it was optional. So when the teachers could choose to work through this, you know, could go to full year, teachers could choose, bus drivers could choose, students could choose. And it was only at two of their 14 elementary schools.
Twenty, well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're roughly the same size as you did. So it was, it was, we realized that these schools aren't performing. What can we do? High the programs, give a shot. If you want to send your kid through the summer, we'll be there. And it wasn't every grade, every level. Interesting.
Yeah, it was pretty interesting.
And I just wanted to comment that one of our predecessors on this board who served 22 years, Chairman Norman, who I think we all have a lot of respect for, advised me when she first knew that I was going to pursue this was stay engaged in continuing education as a board member and invest, invest in your board. So I, yeah, it's a big commitment, but it's so worthwhile. Look at this rich discussion that Mark and Jackie have brought back. So thank you for attending and bringing that back. I appreciate it.
Excellent. All right. Seventy, discussed working dates for 2018, 19. That's Mike and I. So on page 22 of your packet, you will find the proposed working dates for the next school year. And we are here to listen to your feedback if you have feedback for discussion. Super. Okay. Great. That was a rich discussion.
Yeah.
All right. That makes it nice and easy. All right. Seven F financial report with Michelle. Michelle, thank you as always for putting so much information together for us. Is there anything that you want to highlight or you just want us to ask any questions?
There are actually a few items of interest. Just that this is kind of where we have the opportunity to communicate as department staffs where we work flexibly to support our principals as instructional leaders. So every little narrative, I tried to put in a story about our monthly snack to eat. So we did some planning for what we can do to ease the pressure point for teachers as support staff and we make that work for them better for next year. We also have a lot of transitions still happening in the business office and so we positions opening and just making sure that we get the right people in the right places. We have, I just want to plug my benefit supervisor, Lynette Hoffman. She's been doing a ton of outreach for our staff to educate them. She uses our partners with employee benefits, optional benefits programs, hers information. She's just constantly trying to work with both our unions and our key communicators in the district to get employees informed about their benefits and planning for their retirement. Leah has continued with the new and improved format for our student incident reports. Our work minutes comp, I just want to say, I totaled it up and we're down five things to date that I don't know if it's related to wellness rooms or not, but that's good news to see. And I'm happy to answer any questions I have about any of those topics or the cash flow report.
Martin?
Michelle, if there's nothing obvious, you can say nothing obvious, but was there anything that popped out under the category of noise?
I'm sorry?
Was there anything that popped out under the category of noise?
Not specifically.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark?
Not necessarily the financial report specifically, but just thank you for your financial leadership in bargaining committees. It's really helpful. Appreciate the great econ, sayide on the class, but you guys are just, you guys are providing excellent leadership on the bargaining committee. So thanks for that.
Thanks, Michelle. All right, policies for first reading, starting with J V V. Travis?
Thank you. As I stand in the work session, I bring this policy forward in draft form to you guys tonight on behalf of a lot of people who informed the process. And I'll just comment briefly on the process that we went through and recognize a few individuals and then happy to answer any questions that you might have. We started by reviewing the policies of our neighboring districts. Many of them have equity policies. And we began with OSBA's recommendation kind of as a baseline. We went to our admin team and went through a process of highlighting the words that resonated with us in the OSBA proposal, but also added language that made the OSBA draft more in line with Hillsborough's values and our identity and the needs that we have moving forward with an equity policy. and our identity and the needs that we have moving forward with an equity policy. We formed a small revision group. I want to thank Olga who's here and Sayedeh and John Allen, who are part of our word smithing crew that took that feedback and tried to craft it into something that represented what we felt like we should bring forward to you. I also want to recognize Gaspar and Martha and Sayedeh, who's not here, who are our translation team. We brought the draft to them. Thank you very much for your hard work. So that this would be the first policy that this would be the first policy that from its inception was bilingual. And then we took it to, Olga helped host a bilingual, a Spanish meeting, all in Spanish, to review the Spanish version of the equity policy and get feedback from our parent advisory council. Then we brought it back to the admin team for a final revision. And tonight we bring to you a final draft for 30-day review and hopefully approval on June 26th. So again, the draft consists of three parts. There are beliefs and definitions in the first part, what our commitments are. And then in the third part, what we will do specifically to achieve our goal of equitable outcomes for all Hillsborough students. So happy to answer any questions at this time.
We did have a discussion about it upstairs in the work session. So I think that it doesn't look like anybody has any additional information to share.
More woohoo.
Woohoo tomorrow. I will do it.
All right. Policy EBB with Michelle. It looks like the markups are pretty clear here. So do you want to highlight for us?
No, it complies with old shadow reporting, according to OER recommendations, but our practical application and reporting to you. And internally, it's not really that safe, right? So there is a possibility.
Any questions from Michelle about EBB? Let's see, thanks, Michelle. Oh, no, I'm just kidding. Jackie?
Sorry. So we took it out with the Board will receive reports on serious injuries. The risk manual linking records of reports. So will the Board not get, I mean, we haven't had any of those reports, but it just says the Board will receive reports on serious injuries or illnesses.
It doesn't, it's my understanding that this doesn't change the way we report to you now.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Okay. JOA directory information with Dawn. Dawn, any highlights for us or?
There's no highlights specifically, other than it's just some small things to align with, you know, hospital points that we take into line with this.
Thank you. Any questions for Dawn about JOA? Thank you. Okay. FAR one with Casey. Normally we don't see ARs, but sometimes we do. Do you want to walk us through it all or?
Yeah, I think just, just the reason why this is brought up is through this bond cycle, we will be naming two elementary schools along with that, the mascot. So this kind of clarifies how we see the formulation of those committees working and how it'll follow through all the way to the end about soliciting student, community, staff input to narrow the selection down to a final recommendation superintendent. So it's just a refresh of this policy and we'll be utilizing it here shortly.
Thank you, Casey. Jackie?
Two questions. The committee, the School of Colors mascot committee, will there be district representation on that committee? And what ties into that is, are suggested names and mascots vetted?
That'll be part of the committee's work. So the principal, and I suppose there could be a designated to that if there may not be a principal yet at a future elementary school. We have this go alongside the naming of the school, which we brought a while ago. So there'll be a selection of, of representation of who's on that committee.
Got it, okay.
Including district staff.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Dawn? Oh, Mark?
I appreciate that's very student-centric. That's great. How do we reach out to the students of new schools that don't exist?
Well, so we will know where the students are currently living that will attend this school. So I'm forecasting that we would reach out to those students that live in that new school boundary and invite and solicit them to take part in that committee. That would be one way to get the students that will be attending that school.
And the two schools we're building are elementary schools. Do you expect a lot of input from first graders?
No, not necessarily. I would see the first graders, but maybe towards the older intermediate students, fifth, sixth graders that are going to be attending that school for the first time, their parents, et cetera, potentially. So yeah, probably not the first, that lower level.
I don't see parents mentioned, but yeah.
Mark, one of the things that we've done over the, as we've opened new schools over the last several years is that, as Casey was saying, we've got the ability to identify the students within the boundaries that are going to be feeding that school. And we also, when we're opening a new school, we name the principal very early in the process. And they reach out and they start having meetings with the kids that they know are attending that school. They start that community building process. So this would be a natural progression of that.
Jackie?
Sorry, another question. I can't remember on the naming, who has the final, who does the final approval of the naming of schools? Do you remember?
I think it's you. Yeah.
But the mascot is the superintendent. Is that normal? I'm just asking.
We don't trust you guys with the mascot.
Okay, I'll figure that one out.
So typically in an AR, it doesn't involve the board.
Got it, okay.
So that's why the superintendent's in this one. And it is the board who does select the name of new schools. And there's, you may remember, there's a whole process that we go through.
Okay.
I'll remember that. All right. Thank you very much, Casey. I think that's it. Any more questions? Yeah, you're good to go. Thank you. Okay. Policies regarding evaluations with Anna.
So essentially, we're just aligning our OSBA recommendations with the OAR and also folding in our Hillsborough School District staff evaluation schedule. So we just have a language that kind of holds all of those pieces together.
Questions? Jackie and Martin?
So when you say folding in the Hillsborough's schedule, evaluation schedule, does that schedule ever change or is it generic enough inherent to where if it?
This one is generic, but we have a teacher handbook that we gave the union to design for like licensed staff. And then we have an electronic system that we use to coordinate all of those pieces that we've been using for the last, I think it's five years.
Okay. Thank you. Marvin and Erica?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that in addition to the handbook that Anna mentioned, there's also the contract language itself, which speaks to some of these issues. So there's actually little pieces of this in a lot of places that need consulting. And by the way, I didn't see any, obviously there weren't any comments with it. So good job.
I was just going to ask if there were any specifically changes that, you know, staffer educators have to be aware? Like when the evaluation changes, how do they know that they're going to be measured on this now and the changes are before so that they're aware and they can perform?
That's a great question. So when Senate Bill 290 passed about five years ago, we worked in collaboration with the union and we did a lot of PD upfront with our principals and with PD with staff to help them learn how to write student protocols because that was a requirement, also what the evaluation process and what the evaluation looked like. And so we are in the process and we have an evaluation committee and we're going to adopt the five Ds. And so there's going to be work that we'll do together. We really believe in that collaboration because it just helps build a solid understanding of what, you know, teachers are going to be, you know, evaluated on and what our principals are going to be looking for. And we've done a lot of work already with the five Ds through the Center of Educational Leadership to kind of build that capacity.
Okay. Thank you. And Elaine, we have several policies regarding special education. Do you want to highlight any for us or just be here if you have questions?
Nothing too much to highlight. As you know, there's multiple processes and procedures in special education and these primarily align them with recent legislation to make sure everything is updated. So that's about it. Nothing too huge to add there. Everybody got any questions?
Jackie?
I'm just pulling them. So on page 40, oh, I think it's 49 actually. I wrote down 48, but it says that a number of.
Jackie, can you tell me which policy or?
I'm sorry. IGBAG, oh, it's an AR.
IGBA.
IGBAG. Sorry, please, I'm going to find it. And it's, is it the child identification procedures? Special education procedural safeguards? Yeah, page 52.
Page 48?
Oh, I'm using a printed one.
And if you've printed it yesterday, we actually added the Spanish version of that equity policy and that changed your page number.
Oh, that's mine, okay.
Sorry.
No, no, it's all special safeguards, AR. And it's three, three B. It says that, do you want me to wait? Sorry, I'll wait.
It's okay. Let me just grab it here. I have it.
Okay.
All right. Three B.
Where it says written notice of any meaning sufficiently in advance to ensure an opportunity to attend. My question is, that seems vague, only because if additional professionals with expertise who can attend according to this, I don't know that that would give them, I guess I don't know what sufficiently means because later in the same policy, it says there are specific timelines given to respond. So I just don't know, I mean, to me sufficiently to a principal might be different than sufficiently to me and my counselor and the therapist and the physician. So I just, I want to make sure that we're consistently clear, if that makes sense?
Yeah. So the way that the special ed rules are written, there's some very explicit timelines, particularly with respect to things like evaluation and some meeting notices and things like that. But this particular one is intentionally vague because sufficient is kind of relative to the people who are sort of in the IEP team and coming to that meeting. And so what that really means is that everybody on the team is satisfied that they had adequate notice to come to a meeting. So if we're, if we're talking about planning a meeting or we're talking about a meeting where we're reviewing an IEP, we would normally have, we strike for about a two-week timeline in advance. And then we also get input from members of the team. So two weeks before, we might send them email or do some, use a phone call out and just say, hey, what are some times that are going to work for you? And then what we do is kind of just like a puzzle. We put all that together and then we schedule the meeting. So it's definitely involving input. And if there are people who cannot attend that are on the IEP team, we need to reschedule it to a time that they can attend because they need to be there.
Okay, okay. I have another question on a different policy. Should I wait? Or? No, it's in this, it's in this one. It's IGBAJ.
What is the title of that?
Special education free, it's a free appropriate public education. And it's the first one, it's 1A. And my question is, it says that the services will be provided at no cost to those who've reached five years of age, but not until one. How does our early learning and preschool programs fit into this or does it not? Because it starts at kindergarten.
So we do all of our early intervention through North Coast Regional ESD. We do all of our work there through North Coast Regional ESD. If a student is placed either in Hillsborough preschool or in one of our district preschools, or just like a Hillbrook community preschool, that happens through North Coast Regional ESD. So parents need to go to the ESD and register their child and have them evaluated to see if they are eligible to have access to any of these programs. Does that?
It does, because we specifically say who have reached five years of age. So we specifically call out that, that age. So it's not the younger ones because we go through the ESD for that?
The five-year-olds also will go through the ESD and then they can come right into school age after that. So the five-year-olds who are in preschool often are out in the community preschools or Hillbrook preschools and then they move right into their kindergarten kindergarten.
So there wouldn't, I guess, I, if you might ask, I'm sorry. So there would, this wouldn't, there wouldn't be any kids that were younger than five that would fall under this policy that we should change that age?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was asking the question the wrong way. Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions for Elaine? Okay, thank you. Okay. We are at item eight on our agenda, which is to approve the consent agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second?
It's been moved by Erica and seconded by Kim to approve the consent agenda. If you would like to approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. The consent agenda passes. And we'll move right on to 9A in just a moment, but give us a second to find those pages in our packet because there's a lot of pages for the consent agenda.
123?
Yeah, 123.
Thank you, that's all.
Thanks.
Okay. So award contracts for parent bus drop-off improvement projects. At Lad Acres, Eastwood, McKinney and Jackson Elementary Schools with Casey.
Yep, as part of our bond program. These are the first parking lot parent drop-offs that will be beginning right when school gets out. And we've gone through our standard process for bids for these projects. And the results of the bids are as follows. So we're recommending that the Board award the contracts for these funding and bus drop-off improvements.
So first, let's look for a motion to award the contracts and then we'll discuss.
I have a question about the motion. Does the motion need to have all the specifics that are listed here? Like it's printed in the bolded list, you need all the dollar formats?
My thought is that we probably do.
Okay, here we go. I'd like to make a motion that we award the contract for the summer 2018 parent bus drop-off improvement projects as follows. Award the Lad Acres Elementary School contract to, is it Cur contractors, on the amount of $1,016,230. Award the Eastwood Elementary School contract to Cur contractors an amount of $672,190. Award the McKinney Elementary School contract to Five Star Buildings Incorporated in the amount of $568,125. And finally, award the Jackson Elementary School contract to Cur contractors in the amount of $888,260. Second?
So I'll say it was moved by Kim and seconded by Mark. Thank you, Kim, for that endeavor. So is there any discussion about this action item or questions for Casey?
More woohoo.
So I don't see any. So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Mark that we award the contracts for the summer 2018 parent bus drop-off improvement projects as listed on page 123 of the packet. If you would like to award those contracts, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, that passes, thank you. We are at item 9B, declare surplus equipment and authorize recycling classroom furniture.
Okay. Again, it's part of the bond program. We have a bunch of schools that are getting new student furniture. So in order to do that, we need to get rid of the old. And so by declaring this surplus, we'll be able to take that old stuff out and put the new stuff in. So in here is an inventory of what we are recommending to put as surplus for this summer, the first group of elementary schools that are getting new furniture.
Thank you, Casey. I'm looking for a motion to declare surplus equipment and authorize the recycling of classroom furniture. You can find the language on page one-hundred-and-twenty-eight.
I move that we declare the obsolete classroom furniture identified in the May twenty-second Board Meeting Packet as surplus and authorize the recycling of this furniture through International Reuse Network as part of the 2017 Bond Program.
Second. It's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Erica, that we declare the surplus equipment and authorize the recycling of classroom furniture. Is there any discussion or questions?
I was just going to ask, is there going to be another, is there other schools that are also needing this, or is this...
All the schools in the district throughout the bond will get new student furniture. So this is just the first eleven.
Got it.
Next summer, there'll be another group, and then the following, and the following. And then as new schools get major renovations or come on board, that'll take place at that time also.
Okay, so it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Erica that we declare the obsolete classroom furniture identified in this May twenty-second Board Meeting Packet as surplus and authorize the recycling of this furniture through the International Reuse Network as part of the 2017 Bond Program. If you would like to declare that, approve that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, that motion passes. Okay, we are at nine C, adjusted appropriations. The language in our packet has changed just a tad, so we have a paper printed out that Val should have given you all, with the updated language printing in red for that motion. And so I'm, I'm ready to receive that motion when you all are ready.
I understand that we approve the adjusted appropriations for the general special revenue funds listed in the May twenty-second Board Meeting Packet.
Second. It's been seconded by Kim and, no, it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Martin. I apologize, that we approved the adjusted appropriations. Is there any discussion, Jackie and then Martin?
This totally confuses me. I'm just going to be honest. Can somebody give me just a quick, what exactly this is?
These are changes in appropriations from the point that we adopted the budget for the current school year. So that's based on estimates that we have at the time, was this time last year. And so moving through the year, we have some increases, some adjustments, some decreases and movement, and so that's, it's just listed out here. We have all of our special revenue funds. Most usually, the very last item is appropriation for our bond projects that we have completed or plan to complete this bond right here, which is not part of our original budget. So it's required by local budget law that we present these to you guys, so that you can see variation from the original adapted budget.
Thank you. Martin, and then Mark?
I just wanted to make you, Michelle, this was, the four of us who sat on the audit committee, this was, this was one of the things that the auditor wanted to make sure that we did, and we're doing it, and so thank you. And in my mind's eye, this is really a manifestation of, of budget excellence, and I'm not surprised we're doing it under your leadership, Michelle. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll take that back to my seat.
Please do.
Mark?
So I'm just confused. Jackie, maybe? The first column is adjusted, so the first column is what we actually spent, the second column is what we thought we were going to spend. How would you describe the columns?
So the adjusted appropriation would be after the adjustment is made. Previous appropriation is in alignment with our original budget, and the total adjustment is the amount of the change.
And that, that, all of the adjustments are not summarized anywhere, right? The total, we don't know, the net positive, net negative amount of these adjustments isn't represented in the stock, correct?
It's not. We, I follow the format that we've used before.
Okay.
And I'm happy to change that up. I do anticipate having general fund appropriation changes next month. I have to wait until we're, till our final period is to decide.
Erica? Yeah, I was just going to say again, thank you for taking our suggestions during the audit committee, and I think just that, that use of rating this a little bit better would lead to have either a negative and a bad, so that we know whether it's lower on that last column. Just so that when we're looking at as a whole, it's a lot easier to distinguish when we're adding them or subtracting. Just a few questions.
We, we rarely have negative appropriations. We try to be fairly conservative in our budget process. And so on Fund Two Twenty, you'll see a negative $2 million appropriation, and that was, the majority of it was added back under Fund Two-Ninety-Eight, from Minute to Ninety-Eight. That was a coding change that the Oregon Public Education Commission recommended to us, just for naming ease and consistency throughout the state. But yes, code coding would be great.
Oh, and Martin, you weren't really on. No, okay. Any further comments or questions for Michelle? Okay, it has been moved by Kim and seconded by Martin that we approve the adjusted appropriations for the general special revenue funds listed in this May twenty-second Board Meeting Packet. If you would like to approve those adjusted appropriations, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, we are at item ten on our agenda, which is the H C and H E A time. So come on down, you guys. I thought there was more.
Right. Hello. So we are three weeks out to the end of the school year, and our staff definitely feeling. Students are getting antsy, people are, are kind of getting close. Everyone's looking forward to the summer. We're getting all the flurry of resignations and retirements coming through with classified, and we're doing staffing, which I don't know if you know how that works, is it sends out spreadsheets to principals, and they have to figure out how to make sure everybody has a job master here. And it's, it's a really monumental task that takes a lot of oversight, and also it has a lot of additional help from H R. Actually, you know, it's, it's interesting talking to Sayida before she does staffing review and after staffing review, and you can tell that she has been drained, because she has spent two days with Carol going over line by line to make sure everybody has a job, everybody hasn't, no one's been reduced below their benefit level, everyone still has their insurance, and that the cuts are done in the most fair way possible. And it sucks, because we do have, you know, people are, we do have reductions in classified staff this year. In not positions, but in minutes, you know, fifteen minutes here, thirty minutes there, depending on who it is and how the program we're going. And we know that every minute is part of making sure we have a balanced budget, and we understand that. At the individual level, it still hurts, because it's still their livelihood, it's still, you know, money that they use to pay rent, money that they use to support their family. And that's difficult, but we understand. And I think people keep coming back, because they love this school district, believe in the work they do, they care about what they do, and they want this to be a professional environment. And unfortunately, that's, doesn't always happen. Staff-to-staff conflicts can arise, people who don't like each other, who have, you know, some sort of interpersonal issues, those crop up. And especially when we get the added pressure of reduced staff, open positions, you know, custodians pulling double shift, you know, having four sub jobs and only one of them being filled, it causes tension. And mediation can really only go so far. And I'm really impressed by how much our H R department and our supervisors try to solve problems through mediation, through shared conversation. We're working together with, with our union to make sure that everybody gets what they need, and they get the support they need. But at the end of the day, sometimes mediation doesn't cut it. I've talked about this, and it's always a touchy subject for, for unions, is that we have a bad rap, that we, that unions are there to save bad employees, and that's just not true. We're there to make sure employees are treated fairly, and that the district does their process, and they treat everyone fairly. And I will say that over the last, I think, I've been here eleven years, which I'm kind of like, oh my gosh, I can't believe it, that our district has gone leaps and bounds in how we handle staff issues, how we handle staff complaints. Investigations are treated, you know, documented, that they're followed, that our people do a really good job of doing investigations, and making sure that staff have closure at the end of an issue, and that if there is improper behavior happening, is that those staff have very clear directions on what they need to do and what their expectations are. I think sometimes people need reminded of that, because they get into this, you know, groove, they know how things work, this is how it's always been. And, you know, I, I think we have seen a big shift in how we interact with students, and how classrooms are operated, and things that were okay ten years ago are not okay today. And we have staff who need to learn that. And I think it's incumbent on our principals and our supervisors to give them that support, and to make sure that they understand that there are expectations, and that, that they know that there's a process to be followed. And, and I really hope that we see that more as we move forward with additional trainings and additional supports. And sometimes coming down, laying down the law is what a person needs to make sure it's a good environment. Because I am tired of losing good employees, because they hate their coworkers, and they just can't work with them anymore. I want that to change, and I really need your help to do it. Thank you.
Can't hold you, I see. I can't see you. I love my glasses at home. I know who you are, except for the gown, the other, the short hair.
Michelle!
I like it, it's cute, it's nice. I want to talk about transfers. Transfers are tough, you know, Jill Golete, H E A president, that's for a little bit, but transfers are tough, especially if members don't know it's coming, you know? I often wonder, like, man, if we could just give them a heads up, or plant a seed a little bit, but on that transfer day, if they have no idea that they, they're going to be transferred out of the building, and they haven't requested a transfer, then, you know, you're like, man, if I would have known that I was going to be transferred, I would have, you know, I would have had input, and suggested three to five places I want to go. So I don't know how to fix that, except, you know, conversation and collaboration, and anytime someone feels like they have a say in where they're headed, that sure helps them adjust to the change that's coming up. I wanted to share that Mark and I were able to shake hands yesterday, because we actually TA'd on two articles. Yes, number eighteen, which is just miscellaneous provisions, so. But also six, which is member evaluation. So we're headed in the right direction, and that's wonderful. I also want to talk about, when Martin, you said, you know, call of action around safety, and, and I feel exactly the same way, you know? If I have one teacher that calls me and says, you know, I've had an incident in the classroom, and I feel unsafe, that's one teacher too many. We should all feel safe in our, in our day at work and in our environment, and I am here to, really, I want to work together to figure out ways where all teachers and all students feel safe every day. It's really important. You know, last week, we had the ballots and levies and measures came in, and I'm in the same building as the Beaverton Education Association, and so, you know, that's a tough day for me, when they're over there just, you know, screaming and cheering, and they've passed their levy by seventy-one point seven seven percent, and they're like, we don't have to cut three hundred teachers! And I'm like, yeah, what is it like to be you? Because, you know, I'm, I'm here, like, this is, this is tough. I'm dealing with class sizes, and teachers saying, I saw on paper, there was a forecast of, you know, forty to one. And I know it's just a forecast right now, but, you know, we've had to shore up stuff here, and so we've got to figure it out, you know? I mean, we're, teachers are seriously at a breaking point when it comes to the class size, and really trying to take that step forward and collaborate, and get to know every child, and, and more than just their strength and need and need, but really get to know them, so that they will say, it's, it's that teacher, it's Mrs. Golete that I know cares about me. But it's tough to do when you have thirty-plus, thirty-five, forty kids. And I'm always going to come back to, you know, the foundation, which is the K two, which is so important, you know, the, the, the class size where you really truly can make a difference, and it's not like herding cats, because there's so many. You know, because that's where they're truly learning how to line up, you know? And they're learning the accepted behavior, and they learn that by being corrected. You know, oh, I can't do that, I'm supposed to do this, this is how I line up. She's like, look at the teacher, you know, when she's talking to me. So, you know, please help me help you. I don't know, just please, please help me come up with ways, you know? The, the association is really ready to, to make a difference. And we need more money, we need more money to be successful and do the job, and, and help the teachers with the workload, and the stress, and the safety, and the class size. And so I'm just asking for your support. And then finally, our last rep council meeting is in June, it's the second Wednesday in June. The third Wednesday, I don't think the teachers are in school anymore, so it's the second Wednesday this year, and it's just a social, really, for the reps. And I always talk about, you know, coming here and the school board and getting to know all of you guys, which I have, and they would like to get to know you as well. So I have cards, I'm going to invite you to our rep council, which is really not a meeting, it's more of a social. And I have cards here from four to six, the date and everything, and I hope that you can come and just say hi, and if you can stay for five minutes or fifteen, whatever you can, we'll have food and we'll drink and lively conversation. And Martin, I left your card sitting on my desk, but I invited you personally yesterday, and I left you a little note in here, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Superintendents time.
All right. So everywhere I've been the last couple of days, people are talking about Michelle's hair. I'd just like to point out that I got a haircut this weekend also. All right, so I, I just want to spend a few minutes talking about, we have had an incredibly positive year with, with the bond passing, with our graduations, the way they are, with community visibility with all of you folks, and just that they enrolled you, made into the community already. We've got incredible students who are doing great things in the classroom, whether it's academically, or the extracurriculars they're involved in, or the athletics they're involved in, whatever, whatever their thing is, we've got students that have just been highlighted over and over again this year. And during those times when it's really positive, and we're celebrating those things, it's, it's easy to look really good. We're, we're in a situation now where we've got several, several big ticket items going on, and kind of some hot topics in the district. And I just want you to know as we go through that, that we also take responsibility for that as well. Our response and our behavior during this time, when we're challenged, is, is just as crucial. And I, I want you to know that as we investigate these issues, we're going to be very thorough with our investigation. We, we take our responsibility to take care of the due diligence, that is, we take full responsibility for that, it's not something we take lightly, and we will continue to communicate with you and the community as well, and be transparent in these issues as we go through them. So I just want you to know that. It's been, it's been a very positive year, going through some challenges right now, but we will get through those with high integrity as well. Thank you.
Forty characters, I'm Jackie.
We had the opportunity, and there's several women, women mates as well, to attend the Children's Festival and the Latino Festival over the last couple of weekends, and kind of helped staff an H S D booth. That was really fun. It's exciting to, to see all the kids and, and the people that did that outreach. We, I attended the Valedictorian and Sud- Suditorian luncheon today. Oh my gosh, those kids are so impressive. I love them feeling extremely envious. It's just, I mean, you know, it was so many, you know, they're going to these colleges, and they're studying these, these really hard things. I mean, there were like three or four people who wanted to be orthopedic surgeons, and I was like, oh, I just, yeah. Very impressive, very impressive, and very exceptional kids that we have in our school district. I'm looking forward to attending the graduations for the first time, so.
Echo everything that Jackie said and add to that, proud to be H S D. It was another one of those big, major outwages at the Superman Slam. And, and I echo Jill's comments about bargaining that's ongoing. I'm experiencing the license in my colleague Martin. I'm experiencing the license and my colleague Mark is on the classified in very good and substantive and productive. It's just a good experience to go through, so I'm really glad to be a part of that process. And I just wanted to assure Travis, yes, yes, the advanced ED was compelling.
Thank you.
Yes.
I felt you were locked in, Martin.
Was.
I appreciate that.
I don't really have much to share this time around. I also appreciate the events that were the volunteering, just getting out there and look forward to doing some more. I did go to the Chica Celebration, which was just the end of the program. And it was really inspirational to hear the students that graduated from the program and then suddenly would come back. And one of them was a keynote speaker, and it was really great to hear that.
A lot of echoing, echo chamber at what Jackie and Martin already said, the events have been great. I guess I would add Olga, thank you so much for, the staff who sent us, they've been just amazing the last two events at the Children's Festival. Special shout out to Gloria, whoop, let's finish up. She was amazing, by the way. So it's if you didn't know that already. If you don't, if you have never gone on the HSF Surprise Patrol, I recommend it. It's pretty fun. It's something, I think some of you guys have done before. So HSF provides grants to our teachers. I think maybe thirty apply, ten get it. It's not, it's not a huge percent, it's pretty competitive. But they go surprise the teachers in their classroom with students in the class and, you know, let them know, today we did a pug mill, which apparently mold, helps mold clay in art class. And, and replacing hand dryer, paper towel dispensers with hand dryer, so there's stopping out of paper towels and there's so much waste. Things like that, so it's, it's really fun. If you get a chance to do it, it's very rewarding to be there when the teacher gets a prize. Echoing Martin again, the teamwork on our collective bargaining sessions in, I sat in on Martin's once, and ours has been great to realize that we're all on the same team. And that brings me to, I guess, the one hundred and eighty person elephant that has left the room. I am a century band parent, was before I became board member, so it's an issue very dear to my heart. So the, I understand all the emotions. I, I'm disappointed that we had such difficulty getting factual information out to that group of people who are being impacted so heavily by some of the changes. And ultimately, it links back to where I was just a second ago. It's the, I'm, I'm, not from here to here, maybe they'll watch the video, whatever, but I'm very disappointed in the lack of recognition that we're on the same team. The, the conflict that was taking place there seemed unnecessary to me. And if the, the people involved realize that we're all on the same team, I think, coming just from that place of not being adversarial the minute you get a piece of information can make a difference, I think. So a little disappointed that, that we weren't able to work collaboratively to get to that solution more quickly.
I've had the opportunity to go to a lot of festivals. My daughter now thinks that we're doing something every weekend. What festivals do we have coming up? So she's got an opportunity to go really being out and interacting with community members. And I guess we'll be running with this coming year.
See, that's cool and exciting, that it gives us like, do, do we have to go out there with you? Same things, thanks to Beth and her whole team. I just thought the HSD festival was amazing this year. It was so well-accompanied. I always tell everybody, it's like a family reunion. It's one of the only places where we get to go as a board member and really interact with families and students and staff of all of our buildings. And it's just my favorite day of the year in that regard. I was impressed with the Latino festival, how many families and community members were interested in their adult language programs. It was really fun to see people come up with a stroller and a little one and say, I want to know more so that I'm in the right place when my kiddo enters kindergarten, and it was really well-staffed. I wanted to thank Grant and the whole team on trauma-informed care. I just, it's such important work, and I know that you and your team are working so hard on it. And it was amazing to have high school students be so honest in sharing their reflections. And I'm just, a good reminder of why we need it in every building. And graduations, I said earlier, my favorite part was the V.I.D. parking. And then when I thought about it, the, actually the best, it's the best thing of the whole year, is the festival of handing out diplomas to kiddos, especially kiddos that you think might not make it, and they make it. My favorite serve the kids at the end of the line who are out of alphabetical order because they did something really awesome in the last seven, two hours to get there. But handing a diploma to your kiddo is about as special as it gets. And this year, Lucas's eighteenth birthday, I wanted to hand him his diploma cover. And I'm just so thrilled for what we're about to embark on in the next couple of weeks. I know, my baby's graduating, come on.
So on the other side of the, the child spectrum, in terms of age, I have the opportunity to attend the Witch Hazel Kinder Fair. A few weeks ago with Lily and my daughter, who is five. How we all get around saying I have her diploma.
No, I never know. Twenty-two years for Carolyn.
And so, yeah, just that's a, it's a great event that our district puts on. We do two different sides of the city, one at Lincoln Street and one at Witch Hazel. And it's, it's a lot of fun. There are a lot of excited kids there. The highlight, I think, for my daughter and most of the kids that were around us was the food. That was a big deal. You know, get you going, they give you food. That sounds like a lot of fun. I want to come here every day. And then also getting to hang on the school bus. And, you know, getting to ask a lot of questions of the bus driver. It was like a really hardcore interrogation there that I was expecting. And so we are now school bus experts, and, and he was great and really into teaching mechanics. It was a lot of fun. So that was a great event. I know each of the schools do their own event as well, but those are district events. And then they did this picture at the end, which I think was actually their library booth, giving you a book at the end of the whole thing. And they are, get a green screen photo, and they get to pick their background, so they're like official models. And then it's like in a, in a classroom behind them on the thing, and it says like, I'm ready for kindergarten or whatever. So it's just, it's a very inspiring and getting them excited to, to start their career of education off on a really positive way. And so it was really, I think, a huge success. And the team there did a great job. And the next time we meet, we will have done all the graduations. And that really is the highlight of the year. I'm so excited for the new folks who haven't yet gotten to do that as a board member. It is, it is so rewarding and so inspiring and really an awesome icing on the cake for us. So it's gonna be great for you guys to get to do that, for us to get to do it together, and I'm really excited. And that's all. So we will adjourn our meeting. Good night.